Christina.
Yes.
Are you, are you able to speak to him on the telephone?
Sorry. Yes, we, we can, we can get him on the phone, yes.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about proceeding if he said that he wants to make an objection and to actually speak. And I don't know, are you able to speak to him and ensure that he's happy to go ahead?
We're live now, so. I'll just have to, to see. So what you're saying is if, if councillor Price wants to speak, that we need to.
Yeah, I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm concerned about starting without him if he said that he wants to be part of the hearing. And because obviously then he's going to miss things that are said during the hearing.
Okay, okay, if you can just, if you. If you can just bear with me a moment, just see if we can get him to dial in on his phone, I'm so sorry about this. Right, we're now going to try and call councillor Price in on his mobile. So if we can just. Bear with us for another moment or two.
Unknown participant is now joining.
Hello councillor Price, right, we're now going to. Hello, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Right, you're now going to be muted councillor Price, so you can hear the proceedings, but obviously you, if you unmute yourself when you're asked to speak to, air your objection. Okay?
Yeah, good.
Good morning all, I can now confirm that this is 10.15 on Tuesday the 14th of December 2021, and we are now ready to start the meeting. As the first item, we will need to appoint a chairman for the meeting, do I have any nominations please?
Could I appoint James Bensley please? Could I nominate James Bensley please?
Do I have a second for that please?
Yeah, I'm happy to second that.
Thank you. Right councillor Bensley.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you members, good morning all and welcome to the licensing subcommittee of the 14th of December 2021. I would like to advise that this is a live virtual meeting of the licensing subcommittee and today we'll be using Teams to provide a live stream to members of the public via the council's YouTube channel. Please can we ask that you bear with us as we are dealing with numerous internet connections and sometimes this causes a slight delay.
Thank you chairman. During the meeting, all participants except for the chairman will be muted and this should remain during the whole of the meeting unless you have asked to speak. May I take this opportunity to remind you that should you wish to speak during the meeting, please use the raise hand button which can be found at the bottom of the participant screen. The chairman will then be notified of your request. When speaking, if we could ask you to unmute yourself to speak and then mute yourself once you have spoken. If we have to adjourn the meeting, the chairman will advise of this and the anticipated length of the adjournment. Those that have made the licensing officer aware that they would like to speak at today's meeting will be called forward to speak at the appropriate time. Please can we ask you to speak loudly and clearly. Whilst members have completed the process of hearing all representations, they will then move into a confidential debating session. The decision will then be heard in public via a further teams meeting. This decision will be available for viewing from 12.30. Chairman, we will now complete a roll call of members present. Councillor Bensley?
Here.
Councillor Moggford? Councillor Moggford here.
I'm sorry I was muted, I'm here.
That's all right, and councillor Robinson Payne?
Yeah, present.
We also have Elaine Higgit, licensing officer, Sarah Moss, solicitor, and Christina Webb, myself, the executive services officer. We also have Mr. Aboraban, the applicant, Mr. Cruz and Ms. Phillips on behalf of the applicant and councillor Robert Price objected to the application. Thank you chairman, we can now start the agenda items.
Brilliant, thank you Christine and well done all officers for getting this up and running. Can I just remind members please, just remainder, just keep your cameras on yourself please and leave your cameras on, thank you if you can, thank you. Can I have item one, apologies for absence please?
We haven't received any apologies chair.
Item two please, any declarations of interest? Nope.
No cuts, any hands raised chair?
Lovely, thank you, and item three, if we can move on to the application of the new premises licence please. We are asked to consider an application for, to vary the premises licence of bar 37 on 37 King Street, Great Yarmouth. To pass over to Elaine please. She can present the report.
Thank you chair. This is an application by Ma Wan Aboraban to vary the premises licence of bar 37, 37 King Street, Great Yarmouth. The applicant has applied for the following changes. The addition of live music indoors as a licenceful activity from midday to 2am Tuesdays to Sundays. An additional two hours on the closing time for the sale of alcohol on the premises. Recorded music indoors and late night refreshment indoors from midnight, excuse me, to 2am Tuesdays to Sundays. The opening hours for the sale of alcohol and recorded music have actually been reduced from midday to 11am and all stated licenceful activities no longer relate to Mondays. A copy of the application can be found on pages five to 22 of the agenda. The current premises licence authorises the following. Sale of alcohol on the premises and recorded music indoors from 11am to midnight each day. And late night refreshment indoors from 11pm to midnight each day. And just to say there's a very small typo on the report on page four when it refers to the current timings of the premises licence. And paragraph 1.3, it states late night refreshment starting at 11am to midnight. That should be 11pm to midnight as late night refreshment always starts at 11pm. And a copy of the current premises licence is shown on pages 23 to 31 of the agenda. Upon expiry of the 28 day representation period, two representations were received objecting to the application. Both representations are from local councillors and can be found on pages 32 and 33 of the agenda. One of the objectors councillor Price is attending today. The other objector councillor Myers has advised that he won't be attending but would like his representation to be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. And can I just pass over to any members please, any questions for licensing officer? Nope, can't see any hands, so if I can invite Mr. Apologies for the pronunciation, Aboraban to give evidence please.
Hello.
Hello, good morning.
So what, what type of evidence are you up to?
Anything to, to say how you're gonna work and advance and open the business and any ideas that you have and how you're gonna run and operate please?
All right. I'm gonna speak on behalf of Mr. Ma Wan Aboraban, because I'm a business partner of Aboraban and also I'm the person running the bar 37. So bar 37 is not a nightclub and is not any bar, so we actually use the space as a modern gallery and a cocktail lounge. So when we are saying that we want to extend our hours, we mention in a way that we want to be able to provide a better place for people to stay a little bit longer over midnight. And that Great Yarmouth doesn't have a lot, they have got a lot of nightclubs but lots of couple peoples or other people like myself doesn't like to go to nightclubs. This bar provides atmosphere that is chill, ambient music and when we have got live music, it's just acoustic music. The bar doesn't fit more than 20 to 25 people. And so far we have been operating for one year and there was no issues. Also, we are the only bar open, well, the only business open after six o'clock on that area, on that side of King Street. Where it is a side of King Street that you don't have a lot of traders and also we don't bring a lot of people around. The only other business that trade people down there over the weekends or during the week, it is the Yankee Travelers. And so that's why we want to create something that can attract people on that side that will promote the area good for new traders to trade, for new business to open. And that's why we want to extend our licence from midnight until 2am. We are not looking to advertise these hours, but we also get lots of people that they live Yankee Travel about half ten or eleven o'clock that they come for a cocktail and they want to stay a little bit longer, business meeting, conversation. Business meeting, conversation, anything. But in a way, we after eleven, of course, call us orders and we need to say to them, now you need to leave, please. We just want to provide an area that they can stay a little bit longer if they want to, you know, just socialise on a well behaved. As I said, so far we didn't have any complaints, and we are not have any issues or antisocial behaviour.
Lovely, thank you. Members, any questions for the applicant, please?
Yeah, could I just ask, chair, with, with reference to a declaration of interest, I understand Mr Cruz actually works for Great Yarmouth Borough Council, should he not have said that if he's a business partner?
I'm afraid I was not related, well, I was not aware that I need to mention that. I do work on not fixed term but temporary term with Great Yarmouth Borough Council, and the reason I do work there is I work as a Covid marshal. And I'm a well-known member of community because I do deliver a lot of community projects for Great Yarmouth. I'm a co-partner of Otter Arts, that's why Emily is into the business, a co-partner of Fire on the Water, and I just create a huge mural this week for Great Yarmouth Borough Council and the Darren Barker and Paula Boys. So yeah, I do work for Great Yarmouth Borough Council. I didn't know that I had to mention that, I'm afraid. I only have been working with this organisation, amazing organisation, Great Yarmouth Borough Council, for the last eight months, and I did already support Great Yarmouth Borough Council in so many different ways. One of the ways it is trying to understand the deprived area that King Street is and bringing the community together for vaccination.
Thank you. And could I also just ask, you said that you're the only business really on King Street. Is there not Liberties and the Eminem Cafe, one or two other businesses that would also be open around the same time as you?
No, so Liberty is still closed. I don't know what is happening. We actually put an offer in it because we want more business open on King Street. Like Mr Marwan Aburaban, I've got other business on King Street like the laundry and the secondhand shop. So we want to improve that side of King Street, that area. So yeah, Liberty is still closed. Eminems do have got a licence until two AM in the morning, but they operate more as a cafe and restaurant. So they close at six o'clock and sometimes on Saturdays, they close at eight PM. Mr Marwan Aburaban is actually the person who opened that business Eminem, and he got the licence for two AM, but he passed the leasing two years ago.
Two years, yeah.
But he is the one got the licence for two AM in the morning Eminem. So yeah, so they don't operate after nine o'clock, maybe because we are open and we know them and we work together. As you know, King's One Bar is closed, but gonna be Octopus Restaurant, Paul's Seafood Restaurant. So, and they have been granted a licence until two forty in the morning because I spoke with the owners this morning, and they are well friends of mine. Once again, we are working in a strategy all together to bring people on that side of King Street, and not just the side of Pegatties. Yeah, but we are the only open business at night time. Apart of Yankee Travelers, they close at nine o'clock. The bar that we actually have got, it is actually the bar used to belong to the restaurant, Yankee Travelers before they closed down with the first owner.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, Carrie, yeah. Thank you, Ruben, for discussing that. Lesley, any questions, please? Sorry, Lesley, he's just on mute, sorry.
Thank you, James, but no, I have no questions on this, I'm quite happy to hear what I'm hearing.
Okay, thank you. Can I please ask, can I invite Emily, please, if she has any, any evidence to give on behalf of the applicant, please?
Yeah, I do, I'd just like to say that I've known Ruben in sort of professional relationship for five years now, and he, with his represent hat on, has been working about their arts and fully understands our long-term development strategy that we have in turning this area of Great Yarmouth into what we call as the cultural quarter. So what our long-term goal is to actually improve this area of Great Yarmouth and attract more out-of-town visitors into the centre and away from the seafront, which is, you know, as we know is thriving. And we want to allow people to explore this area of town in more of an artistic way, and bar thirty seven is an art space. And currently in the daytime, it operates as somewhere relaxed for, you know, business people to go for their lunch breaks and artists, who we have a number of visiting already from the Drill House, using the space as somewhere to, to go and write scripts or just get a coffee or a casual drink. And then I think the plan as well for the evenings, it, it sounds scary, a two AM licence, but it's not going to be like that. His, his capacity is only up to like twenty five people. So we're not talking like a loud lary club. We're talking about something, an area people can go to perhaps after they've been to the Hippodrome in an evening, or if they've been to the Drill House or something like that, or in the future if they've had a meal at the Octopus Restaurant. They can literally, it's, it's pretty much next door. They've then got an option to go somewhere nearby for that casual, you know, nightcap. So I just, I just want to sort of mention that, and that's the bigger picture. You know, it's, it's more about the development of this area of town and, and not creating disruption.
Okay, thank you Emily, as interesting to hear about the, the cultural corner that we're looking at over there, Great Yarmouth. Lovely old job, thank you. Can I just please ask, Ruben, did you want to say anything, just comment on that, please, sir?
Yes, so I want, I just want what Emily said, I just want what, even knowing that we just opened one year ago, and we, most of the time we also have been on a lockdown, and we, well, unfortunately we didn't get any support, but we managed to make it and reopen again the bar. I just wanted to say it is, I don't know if you are aware of the local Mercury Awards, but we are actually there as a landlord pub of the year. So it's myself, Tomstone and the Ramad Arms. So for a business on King Street and that have been operating for one year, closed for six months, being one of the finalists of, you know, of a pub landlord of the year, even knowing I only fit probably ten percent of the capacities against the other people I am on these awards, I think, I think it's pretty much magical and can understand I'm all about the community and all about bringing, you know, elegance to King Street.
Thank you for your comments. If I can just invite any members if had a question, Ruben or Emily in further at all, please?
Yeah, just, could I, could I ask, sorry, could I ask Ruben or, and Mr Aburaban as well, I just wondered, if, I'm just, just trying to understand this. Why is Ruben doing all the talking and Mr Aburaban is applying for the licence? I'm just wondering, because obviously it appears Ruben is, is much more involved in the business. I'm just asking how, how the partnership works and why Ruben's not actually applied for the licence himself?
Well, I can answer to that. So Mr Aburaban, it is the owner of the building of thirty seven. He's the owner of the building, and actually, Mr Aburaban gave me the opportunity to work together with him on this business in a way that we are not there for the profit. And we actually use that building as an office of Represent Project. That's why we opened a gallery space, you know. Represent Project, what is organisation I found myself six years ago when I was nineteen, it is a community group that is all about local artists and local talents. And we don't have funds enough to buy office or to deal. So this is a way that we can talk with artists, we can invite people around, we can do meetings in there, so. And I think the reason we are, I'm doing more the talking it is because I understand this place better than, you know, I went with, with this proposal to Mr Marwan Aburaban, and I said, I want your support on this, I want to run this because I need this place. And he basically, Mr Marwan Aburaban know me for a long, long time, he's like a second father to myself. And he have got five members, business, he runs more than thirty two properties on, on Great Yarmouth as a landlord on King Street. So he have got other business, and the reason I'm doing all the talking is because I run this place with Mr Marwan Aburaban, but I'm the one done the business plan. Mr Marwan Aburaban is the licensing, the personal license of the place, is the landlord of the place, so the building. And it is also the guy to apply for the G O P, but if you want to hear from Mr Marwan Aburaban, you can speak.
I think it was just more...
It's just because I done the business plan.
I think it was just more the fact, why are you not applying? Because you seem to be more involved in the business. That was really what I wanted to know, why you personally didn't apply?
Was, sorry, can I speak now?
Yeah.
Must they make any difference, if he apply or I apply?
Oh no, I'm just trying to understand that your partnership and the reason why you are the applicant and Ruben isn't, that's all, that's just...
Because I applied for, because I applied for Eminem before, it's me. And I don't have any problem. I am in King Street from two thousand and six, and I run thirty two property around King Street, only King Street. I manage a hundred eighty property in Yarmouth. I got twelve shop in King Street, and I own six property in King Street. And I don't have any problem with nobody. Council, planning, health environment, all they call me about any problem for my tenants, and I help them. And now they tell me about noise or something, I don't have any problem with nobody there. Everybody know me. And I open the shop, it's a bar. If you want, I close that shop, business, I will make a cigarette shop. But I don't want this, I need something nice and quiet and people can have nice drink and make King Street a little bit better. Because King Street, if you think, in King Street in two thousand and six five, is ghost town. Smashing windows, all the windows, it's like have, what do you call them? And from the windows metal. Now it's all lifted up. We don't have even Christmas light, you see Christmas light, until the theatre stop. Even that side, we don't have nothing. We try to open more shop, we don't close more shop. If at King's, at twelve o'clock, nine o'clock, nobody in the street, like scared, you go outside, you scared. Before, we need more people moving around, see? Two o'clock, three o'clock, we'll be more safe as well.
The, the idea of this bar and the proposal of this bar came up as a partnership since Represent Project, myself and Emily creates the street party on King Street. Where I bring an artist from Portugal and we made that amazing arches, and we closed King Street, we had live music. And this, this is why did this come up. And we actually are on the making to create that again in March in twenty twenty two. So we have got big plans for that street, that's why I'm doing all the talking, because I love that street. And, you know, how many Portuguese business have you got on that street? And I am Portuguese. So we, I see that street like one of the famous streets in Lisbon, that's why I'm doing all the talking. And, and because if you go into that place, you're gonna see that everything is there, even knowing the Mr Marwan Aburaban and all the licensing, and he's my business partner and he's there with me all the time. Everything is there, he have got a touch of myself. From the tables are painted by a local artist. From the photo booth we had to do on, on, on the, on the door, by the, the cards that you have got on the toilets to identify what is female and male, what is the king and the queen. Everything is done by our local artist. And then you have got a touch of myself because I'm a mixologist. So you have got, you come to my bar, you can find probably the best cocktails of Great Yarmouth. And even better, you can actually find continental cocktails like Capirinha from Brazil. Cocktails that you easily don't find in UK, or at least in Norfolk.
Okay, okay, thank you both for your answer. Kerry Robinson Payne was just asking the question as such, so are you okay with that, Carrie?
Sort of, I don't think I've totally been answered. I just wanted to know really why Ruben didn't apply himself. I appreciate everything that's been said. Can I ask in another way then? How, who runs the bar the sort of, the, the most percentage of the time? Is it Ruben or Mr Aburaban?
We, we run the bar both at the same time. That's why now, since I start working with the council, the bar now is open only from five o'clock, because we are on the bar at the same time all the times.
So you're both there all the time, you're saying?
Yeah.
Both of you are there all the time?
That's why the bar now opens at five o'clock, and you can see that on our social media. It opens at five and closes at ten during the week, because there is no way that we're gonna carry on open during the week more than ten, because, you know, at nine o'clock is like ghost town, it's quiet, sometimes we even close earlier. And on the weekends is when we trade more and we are more busy. But yeah, we open at five until ten. On weekends, sometimes we do open at two o'clock, but Mr Marwan Aburaban is there. The reason Mr Marwan Aburaban applied for the licence is the same reason that he applied for the change of view last year, because all the building is in on his name and all the first licence, he apply himself. And then he came with a proposal, I go fifty fifty on the business, because he needs my new, my unique concept. And I do all the business plan and we run it together. But I think it doesn't really make any difference who applies for the licence when the company, we are both directors. You know, we cannot apply both for the same licence, can we?
Okay, we, we just have to clarify that as councillors, we just need to know, but thank, thank.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Carrie, anything, any further?
Thank you, James, thanks, James.
Okay, thank you. Lesley, any, any questions, please?
Yes, a very, very, very quick one, really. How many people do you expect to be there from midnight until two? Until two, until two, two AM?
Sometimes, yeah, so that depends. We, we have been having Fridays, they are busy, and Saturdays, they've been quiet. We have got Saturdays are busy, and so we, that depends. But we normally have got about, I would say, ten people after midnight. We normally don't get people that comes after midnight. We have got just people that are there before midnight and they wanna stay a little bit longer. As I said, we will not advertise that we are open until two AM.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I understand that, yes.
Yeah, we just want to, if we have got the licence there, we don't need to kick out. The people can just carry on, and we, 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 we basically can carry on with them. So as I said, we are not looking to invite people to come after midnight. We just want to keep the remaining people that we have got there for a little bit longer.
Okay, thank you, I understand that.
Thank you.
Okay, Lesley?
That's fine, James, I understand that, yes.
Lovely old job, okay. If I can move on, Christina, now, if I move on to now the councillor Robert Price, please to speak?
Yes, if councillor Price presses star six on his phone, he'll be able to speak to us.
Thank you.
Hello councillor Price, can you hear us?
Can you hear me, please?
Yes, yes, we can councillor Price.
Oh, thank you, then, I'll be brief, chairman. I've listened to what's been said, and it is quite difficult because unfortunately my, my laptop is down, so I'm doing this on the mobile phone by oral and listening only. So I can't get the body language or whatever of the people speaking. But from the impression that I've made, I don't take anything away from what the gentleman has done with his cultural efforts, working for the various people in the town. I take nothing away from that. I take nothing away from the efforts to improve an area like King Street, which is part of this town's heritage. And indeed, over the years, many people have, have tried, and I, I give my support to anything he can do with anything in the, in the cultural efforts to that area. Whilst I'm speaking basically as an individual, I will declare that I'm also a borough councillor for the Clayton Ward, which you may say, oh, what's that got to do with me as a Clayton Ward councillor? But I do have a great affinity for the area, having had offices and worked there for around about forty-odd years before I retired, and I do love the, the area. My concern is, and I understand you've read my original email objection which is there, and I will enlarge on that. What I will enlarge on, chairman, is the fact that while... What I will enlarge on chairman is the fact that what I've heard today and I hope I've got this right, not being present. It does seem to me that the two gentlemen are more than just friends and associates, they are actually business colleagues because. As it came through, the unraveling of the questions from the committee has actually now said. That they are both directors of the business where at the start of it, I thought it was more like a family friendship issue of one person helping another. One person not understanding the proceeding, but it seems to me that both of the gentleman applying for the. Um license are very, very astute business people, they are little fools and basically. They're not doing it for charity. I I don't take, in my opinion, chairman, the fact that after twelve o'clock is necessary. That is a residential area and all you've got to do is look to the sides and you start to see the flats, if you look behind to the west, you've got the flats. And across the other side and behind you've got terrace houses, we've got ravelling house.
Excuse me councillor Price, excuse you, sorry, sorry councillor Price, just uh pause for a minute please. Uh councillor Mockford, can you just turn off your microphone please, Leslie?
Yes, certainly, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Sorry about that. Yes, go ahead councillor Price, sorry.
Yeah, so if I just pick up from my left, I said it is quite a heavy residential area there as well. And to be perfectly frank, and I'm using what I think I hope is common sense here, I cannot see people. Turning out, say, from the hippodrome, which was quoted by the lady. I cannot see people turning out from whatever restaurant is in King Street at half past ten, eleven, half past eleven, twelve o'clock. In the week, on a Wednesday or a Thursday, going sitting in a bar for another two hours. That that really does not ring true with me and this common sense thing that I'm saying is. I've been in Yarmouth, I've been involved in the social scene, the two o'clock closing time is just not practical. There is another thing which I am concerned about and this is from the Galston point of view, which people have asked for in the high street. Uh licenses further than twelve uh o'clock at night and they've not been granted, they've been turned down and there must be some consistency of approach, I believe. Chairman, I won't go on and on and on because I know that you've got all the information there with your committee. But it does seem to me that this is stretching the guidelines of entertainment issues a bit too far. Because I really cannot see this being a continental type street. Where the gentleman mentioned Lisbon and I think I know the rule he means, which is lovely, but they don't go on until three, four o'clock in the morning, two o'clock in the morning. Everybody's got to get up and go to work and what is more important, I believe, is the lifestyle and the good. Um the the good health sleep for the neighbours and the residents who are in that area. Thank you very much, chairman, and I don't know whether anyone wishes to ask me any questions or do you want me to move now?
Uh no, thank you councillor Price, if you can just stay there for a minute, I will open it up to the other members and then to the. The applicants as such, but if I can just have Sarah first, please.
Thank you, chair, I just wanted to um kind of uh put councillor Price's uh representation, just to just to make clear that. Um obviously Mister Price has made a representation and he has alluded to things like late night traffic, noise, music, verbal. Um risks around his social behaviour and really anything that he says. Uh here today should be confined to what he has put in his representation, so but anything outside that. Um should not be given weight because obviously the representations about those particular issues. Um councillor Price has also alluded, I believe that I'm right, in the need for a premises. Um that's not a licensing concern, that's a planning concern, but not a licensing concern. Um also, with respect to the other um license being um turned down. Um obviously every um every uh application must be considered on its own merits. Um and just bear that thing in mind, thank you, chair.
Thank you, Sarah, any questions from the members, please? No, can't see any hands, Ruben, you put your hands up, sir, if you'd like to ask a question, please.
Uh no, I I just would like to comment on what councillor was price, councillor Price.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so I respect everything he says, uh so as I did mention before, it is. During the week, even knowing that we apply until two A M in the morning, uh during the week, we actually close sometimes as half nine and ten o'clock. Because it's quiet, if we go a little bit longer, that would be because a private party, like we're gonna have one now on Wednesday. Actually, from a department of G Y B C, we're doing a Christmas private party inside. We do a lot of private parties for uh the J family. As I said, I'm well connected with all the community people in here, so we do a lot of private parties. Normally can chill out and have a meeting, however, there is um. Other business on King Street that have got the license until later, so the I don't know what is the difference, we are open until midnight or two A M during the week. If we have got a private party or Pagaties is open until two A M in the morning during the week. Just because they have got people coming in, at least our private party, we can control the people better because the people, when they go for a private party. Or they understand that they're after the hours because um we we want to keep them there, they are, A, our friends or B, you know. We 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 are not gonna be open until two A M in the morning to get people like, you know. In a way that we just want to sell beer because we don't even care about that, our beer, our common house point is five pounds, it's not even cheap. As I said, we attract different people, we are a different atmosphere and I think. That I invite anyone, councillors, to come around and ever look to the pro- to 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 the property, to the place and see. How special it is that place and when I'm talking about Lisbon. Um in a way, I was just explaining everything I have been trying to do for that street. And I have got a plan that I want to work on that street, that's why I need to try to extend hours of my business. So that will support other business to extend them hours, but I I understand there is plates around it, but we, as I said. Our volume, we have got two speakers inside and they are like home speakers, they are not even like massive. By speakers, they are on these sides, they are studio speakers, so doesn't even go very loud. So I I don't understand what is antisocial behaviour, um we, as I said, so far. We did apply since the beginning when we did the then the change of view. We apply until two A M in the morning and we have been turned down, we accept that. And that's why we said we want to operate for one year, so we can reapply again and prove that we didn't have any issues. We didn't not have any issues, so far we only have got one issue last month and it's not even related to us. We got two younger, well, I don't know, oh, they were two girls, they came from. Uh at other place completely drunk, they want to come in and we basically said, sorry, you are not welcome. But we done our part, we called the police, the police came, spoke with the girls, yeah? And they didn't even take the girls away. And I think it is like they didn't even been inside of our property, we did not accept them going inside of our property, but they still outside shouting. And that's not our fault and they come from somewhere else, so that's why we don't understand how we, we just want. To be giving the opportunity so we can prove that we will not create issues and if we create issues, we are the ones, we go like, okay. There we go, we we give the licence away, we don't care about that, but we want just an opportunity. Sorry.
No, no problem at all, room, thank you for that. If I can just uh now we move on to the closing, anyone else, sorry, anyone else want to ask questions? Elaine, uh Emily or anyone, no, no, all good. Sorry, Sarah, if you can, please, yeah.
Thank you, uh would you mind if I ask a question of the applicant?
No, of course not.
No, okay, um just bear in mind that obviously um the committee's role is. Um to promote the licensing objectives and looking in particular at councillor Price's representation. Um would you be able to say anything about antisocial behaviour? Um whether you've had any antisocial behaviour in the year that you've been open, um and and if so, how you've dealt with that?
As I said, I just gave an example, that was the only time we had antisocial behaviour. And I can, uh you can find out, uh as I said, we have got cameras inside of the property. Uh we have not been asked for any cameras because as I said, the only issue it is these two girls, they show up drunk. We said to them, and that was before midnight, we said to them, you are not welcome in, you ate too much to drink, you need to go home. They start shouting outside of the streets, even knowing they are on another side of the pavement because we applied to extend our hours. We did call the police and we said, can you please remove them from this area because they are creating antisocial behaviours? So that, all of that should be on record and as I know you are broadcasting this on YouTube and anyone to Great Yamah. I just want to put it there because everyone knows that that was the only time we had an antisocial issue. That we technically was not even with us, but as a citizen, we. Called the police because it's it's the best way to do it because, you know, if I live there, I don't want someone outside shouting in my window, you know? Um so so I I actually done that in a way more as a citizen than actually a business owner.
Okay, thank you, room, Sarah, did you want to follow up?
Thank you, yes, and if I could, could I ask the same thing with respect to noise, whether you've had any. Issues with noise, how you would look to deal with any noise issues, if you believe that there might be any?
Uh we didn't have any issues with noise, nobody complained to us, did any tenants complain with you?
I tell you, around my bar is all my tenants. And the top and the front and the side is all my tenants. Nobody even say anything to me.
So far, we didn't have any, I don't think so.
Because most of them, they come and even drinking in the bar, see?
As I said, we are the uh we are, we are a chill out bar, we are like a. We are a cocktail lounge, you know, you go to Norwich and you have a cocktail lounge, you know, we we we. We don't, our lights are different colors to make more atmosphere, our volume never goes up. Ten or fourteen percent on the on the L G speaker. Uh we play music from Spotify, you see, but we 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 are just a chill zone, we, as I said. As far as I'm concerned, we never receive any complaints about noise, even the restaurant next door, when they are trading and, you know. People are having a dinner, we never had any complaints about noise.
Okay, thank you, room, uh Kerry, please.
Oh, thank you, chair, um I just, I was kind of coming in on about the noise, um in your application, I I can't quote the page, but. You'll, if you've read the report, you know, um you're saying that you play uh music through your speakers sort of from your phone. But there's also in there, I can't find it at the moment, but I know I read it, that you might want to have a DJ. Um so I just wondered how, cause that's gonna be a totally different level of noise. Um how you'd uh cope cope with that, what were you gonna do with that?
Uh well, that, eh I think if I'm not. Mix taking, what we have got on application, it is live music and it is acoustic live music. However, if we do have got a DJ, uh our types of DJ is not. Uh nightclubs, as I said, we we don't want to trade the same way Empire nightclub. The Pier nightclub, Pagaties, we are not that type of bar, if we do have got a DJ. Uh will be kind of more, how would I say, rock and roll in a way that with vinyls, very chill outs. Um so I don't know if you have been in in one, in one of the after parties or even. The start of the parties of other artists, the drill house, that you have got Dave and Veronica, they are actually one of the DJs, I already invited them to come along and play. So the way Veronica play and Emily can speak on that, they they do a lot of parties with her, it is uh. You know, is is is, uh can you explain a little bit, Emily, sorry? Can you explain what is the type of DJ Veronica does, please?
Yeah, well, she specializes in vintage vinyl and um the genres, it it's like sixties rock and roll. So it's it's nothing to with heavy bass, it's not, you know, not repetitive beats or anything like that. Um and yeah, and it's it's music that you can still have a conversation during. Um I think what Ruben means is that he's not planning to have a drum and bass night DJ, you know, he means DJ in the sort of. Vintage retro respect.
Okay, you're okay Kerry?
Yeah, thank you for that.
No worries, I feel as though we moved on a little bit there, sorry, but we kind of went off subject, but uh I just want uh. Any questions for councillor Price, please, from any members at all, just confirm that note. And any questions from anybody given any representation, Ruben or Emily, just to follow up with any. Any questions to councillor Price, please?
Uh no questions.
No, you're all okay, that's lovely then, so if I can just confirm that we will now move into the closing statements. And I can confirm there'll be no further questions from this point, please, so if I can just start with councillor Price with the closing statement, please?
Hi back.
Hi councillor Price, are you there, please, sir?
Yeah, can you hear me, your chairman?
Yeah, yeah, we've got, yeah, if you can just fit, if you can just sum up, please, with your closing statement, thank you.
Um well, chairman, I I've listened with great interest and I must have said it's been a a quite a different e- experience of. Uh from being there, but my impression is that the committee and yourself have dealt with this in a very, very fair manner. I believe both the applicant and the respondents have had a fair hearing and my faith. Is in the um system and whatever decisions you come to will be respected. Uh and I thank you for that, sir, thank you.
Thank you councillor Price, uh if I can have Ruben or Emily, please, if you can just like to have your closing statements. Ruben, would you like to say anything, sir, just sum up?
Uh well, I just want to say, it's been a pleasure for us to be here, I want to thank Emily to come and support me because she knows um. I have been, well, we have been trying to create something unique and yeah, it's 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 been a pleasure. Um and well, any comeback from you guys uh with the results, we will be looking forward to hear. Uh we will respect your decision, but I would love to invite you guys to come along to the bar and experience what I'm talking. Uh because uh we are not about the, you know, we we of course, we want the business successful. But we are more about eh having a space that people can socialize and have a really nice time. And and not just like all about, you know, the trading.
Okay, lovely job, thank you, Emily, any final words, please?
Yeah, I I echo a lot uh that Ruben just said, um I thank everyone for hearing us out. Um and I just want to end with that I hope that it's fully understood that. Um Ruben's goal for Bar F seven is to improve the area. And in in no manner does he want to cause any detriment to King Street. And I hope, yeah, I hope that regardless of the outcome, that he can demonstrate that with his trading of the bar.
Lovely, thank you, Emmy, and just any final words from the applicant himself, Mister Aboran, would you like to say any final words, sir?
Uh thank you very much, I hope you give the license to us.
Okay, thank you, very few words, sir, thank you, we will now be closing this. Session or this part of the meeting and move to the debate session for the members and a further teams meeting will be convened at twelve thirty. To deliver a decision, thank you for your time and being here.
Chairman, as it's only eleven, as it's only eleven o'clock, do you want to uh move the uh decision forward at all?
Yeah, of course, yeah, members.
You think, uh.
Any thoughts?
I don't know how long you think it's going to, but you 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 may not need an hour and a half to, you know, reach your conclusion. So it's up to you, you know, i- if you publicly state now what time you'd like to reconvene, we can move it forward if it uh if it helps.
If I can just have confirmation on the time now, Christine, please?
It's uh five past eleven, chairman.
Five past eleven, so if we say uh quarter to twelve?
Yes, certainly, we will reconvene at quarter to twelve to hear the decision of the committee.
Yep, lovely.
That's fine, bye, mate.
Right, members, if I can just ask if till you wait until I advise that the live stream is stopped before we move into the debating session? All right, so there's a question from Ruben there, he's got his hand raised, chair.
If eh just to double check, uh if now the decision is moving for quarter to uh twelve o'clock. Are we using the same link for teams that we have from the the meeting already booked for twelve forty, is that the same link?
Yes, it's the same link, yes, we're just moving it forward.
If any, any problems, room, please don't worry, you'll be concerned, the officers will get in contact with you and that goes to everybody here, okay? Please do not worry, you will be, you will be here, okay?